One is, does it make it easier or harder to live, work, and play in Boulder? Number two is, does it promote racial equity and social justice? And number three is, does it address the climate emergency?
Hello, Boulder and the wider world. This is the Sharing Boulder Podcast. My name is Philip Ogrin, and for episode 12, I sat down with Dan Williams in his backyard to talk about his candidacy for Boulder City Council. This fall, the city of Boulder will be electing five representatives to city council. Boulder Coalition, a consortium of several progressive organizations, including Open Boulder, Boulder Progressives, and United Campus Workers Colorado, have endorsed four candidates, including Dan, Nicole Spear, Matt Benjamin, and Lauren Felkerts. Dan's campaign is gearing up for a busy election season. He is qualified for the city election matching funds, and has boxes of yard signs and campaign stickers in his garage. Despite the swirl of new activity in his life, he made time to sit down for a long conversation to discuss his values and what he hopes to accomplish on city council. I appreciate the calm and thoughtful way that he discusses the issues without trying to soften or downplay the urgency of the problems we face. We hope you enjoy this episode with Dan Williams.
Dan, thank you so much for coming on Sharing Boulder. I really appreciate it. It means a lot to me and David. Tell us about yourself.
Yeah, so I moved to Boulder about 15 years ago. I'd been in Washington DC for a while, first doing public policy work at the federal government, and then I became a lawyer. I had kids at the time who were five and seven. I was sort of working all the time at a DC law firm, and just knew I had to get out and be somewhere where I could enjoy nature, enjoy raising my kids, and just have a nicer life. And looked around at a few different places, and really fell in love with Colorado and with Boulder, so I settled here.
So you actually just sort of like looked on the map, you've been a few, been around, and you kind of thought, this place would be, this would work for me?
I did. I had friends from law schools. I went to Georgetown, and people from there ended up all over. And I looked around and talked with people about where it would be fun to live and where I could practice law and have a much more balanced lifestyle. And this, this rose pretty quickly to the top.
That's so cool to have such a like a deliberate approach to ending up where you went.
Yeah.
Because I started, I'm sort of here by accident, but anyways. So what do you do career-wise right now?
Yeah, so I'm a lawyer at a law firm in town called Hutchinson, Black &amp; Cook. I'm a litigator, so I work on cases that are either heading towards trial or in-trial, or so basically disputes.
Okay.
I do a very, a broad range of cases. So I do civil rights cases, I do cases for victims of sexual assault, Title IX cases, and I also do commercial and business cases. So either businesses suing each other, or individuals suing businesses, that sort of thing.
So I happen to know about at least two cases you've litigated. One was The Bedrooms Are For People fiasco last fall, and the other was a victim of Jeffrey Epstein, is that right?
Right, yeah. No, 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 I'm sorry, Harvey Weinstein.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Harvey Weinstein.
Which victim, right. So which, they're such different cases.
No, I know, it's like, it's not really a nice segue, I guess, but maybe just, but go ahead and just tell us about both.
Let's talk about The Bedrooms Case. So that, you know, I had signed their petition early on in the summer. You know, it was during COVID, and someone biked up to my house with a clipboard and talked with me about it from six feet away, and handed me a sterile pen. I really thought it was great what Bedrooms was trying to do. I got a phone call in late July from one of The Bedrooms organizers telling me something I just thought couldn't be right, which is, the city had told them they needed to get a certain number of signatures by mid-August, and then in July, they were told, actually, no, you needed to get those signatures in June. So they were right on track, doing what they've been instructed to do, but then the city said, you know, no, you actually had to submit your petition previously. And that just seemed crazy. It seemed like something out of a Kafka novel. So I was like, alright, you know, I'll help you out, I'll take your case. So we ended up filing a lawsuit against the city, and it was a tough issue for the court, you know, which is whether if a city administrator gets the law wrong, can the city be held to the promise it made? And there was no question that the city had made the promise, or that they got it wrong. The only question is whether they'd be held responsible for what they'd done. And the judge said he didn't have the authority to do that.
The district judge.
The district judge, right. So we took it up to the Supreme Court, and they initially said they'd hear the case, and we wrote up all the papers and got it ready for them. And then I think they looked at it and decided it was just too complicated to do right before the election, and didn't take the case. So as it worked out, Bedrooms was not on the ballot in 2020. You know, I'm pleased to see they're back on the ballot for 2021, and I think that's going to be a big issue.
Cool. Well, I'm a big supporter of Bedrooms Are For People. I volunteer and helped with the petition campaign this summer. And so really appreciate the hard work that you did to help last year, even though it was sort of for not, but I think, I think in a lot of ways, it's raised awareness of, you know, how important the issue is and how people are resisting it, right? I assume there's something about the city council mechanics that, that's, I don't know, it just suggests like they really didn't want this on the ballot. And so, I mean, they probably could have been flexible with the organizers, but weren't.
No, no, they could have. I mean, it's interesting. The city attorney at the time actually asked that the city council just put it on the ballot, because they got the support that the clerk told them to get. They submitted their signatures by the August deadline, and the council had the authority to put it on the ballot. And basically, the city attorney said, look, this is the right thing to do. We should own up to our word. We should do what we said we would do. And the council still didn't do it.
So did that event have any effect on you being interested in running for city council?
Yeah, it's a good question. I hadn't paid that much attention to city council until watching what happened with Bedrooms and seeing just how unfairly people were treated. And I started watching a lot more closely after that. And yeah, that is one of, you know, that was one of several things that factored in. But I mean, the other is, we're at really a critical juncture for Boulder. I mean, the city has changed a lot, and the way it's changed is it's gotten wealthier and more exclusive, and harder and harder for people even to do what I did 15 years ago, you know, move here with a young family, stretch, get a mortgage, get a house, and make this home. And I think there's still time to reverse that. I think if we take some bold action now, we can make Boulder a place for all of us. But it's going to take some intentionality and some work.
Well, do you want to circle back to the other, the Harvey Weinstein case? Or do you want to dive into housing?
No, I'm happy to talk about that. So the Harvey Weinstein case was interesting. We were representing someone who had been part of a class-action lawsuit, a woman who had been victimized by Harvey Weinstein years ago. And she felt that the lawyers handling the class-action weren't looking out for the victims. And what she wanted to do was go to the judge and say, this case should not move forward as a class-action. I should get to press my own case, because I need counsel who really cares about me. So me and one of my partners, John Clune, took her case.
The lawyers were perhaps just trying to maximize the amount of payout or something like that, and kind of gloss over things?
Yeah, I mean, I think the most sort of optimistic way to look at it is they were doing what they thought would be best for the whole group, but also yield themselves a big payout. And they weren't as focused on the individual client. And you know, my philosophy to lawyering is much more focusing on what each client needs and wants. And I give my advice, but ultimately, it's their choice.
Well, so what did you learn from that experience?
In terms of a client, I mean, our client was just a, just a wonderful person. One thing that really struck me is her experience with Weinstein had happened decades ago, and it had a profound influence on her life, you know, decades later. And seeing that the harm that's caused by sexual assault, seeing how it can dominate someone's life for so many years after the fact, was just really moving to appreciate. And it actually, it makes, it makes me feel grateful for the opportunity to help someone like that, because if I can try to restore a bit of balance through the legal system, you know, I want to be able to do that for people.
Thank, thank you for tackling that. That's an interesting story. Any other litigation stories you want to tell before we move into sort of like city politics?
Oh, let's jump into city issues.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, I have plenty of legal war stories I could tell after doing it for 20 years.
Of course, of course.
For your audience.
Well, yeah, so I mean, front and center for me is always housing. So maybe if you could just sort of articulate a positive vision for what Boulder could do to improve access to housing?
Right, so I mean, same before. I mean, the problem that I see is people are being shut out. That people who got here early, you know, got in, they've seen huge appreciation in their property values, and the next generations are being excluded. And that, for me, means, among other things, my own kids who are 20 and 22, and you know, really wouldn't have a place here. And even if they could get back here, there wouldn't be a strong peer group for them of people who were going and doing interesting and creative projects as, as young adults in Boulder. So what do we do about it? I think there's, there are really two sides to the coin. One is to make the best use of the properties that we have in Boulder. So look, 85% of Boulder is single-family houses. So in 85% of Boulder, you can't have a duplex, you can't have a triplex. And then we have these occupancy limits, which mean only three unrelated people can live in a house, whether it's 2,000 square feet or 5,000 square feet.
I just always like to say when people describe it, that's crazy.
Right, and I think people who aren't from Boulder and hear about this, I mean, they're shocked.
Really, it's totally wild.
Yeah. So in terms of making the most of what we have, bedrooms are for people. It's important for that to pass this year. I mean, that's the lowest of low-hanging fruit in housing opportunity. These are bedrooms that are being heated. These are bedrooms that already exist. If you think about the climate crisis and the need to live more efficiently, adding a fourth or fifth person to a house is the easiest way to make per person carbon emissions go down. So bedrooms, the other sorts of things we can do with our current housing stock are things like ADUs. So these are, you know, granny flats or...
Accessory dwelling units, ADUs.
Right, exactly. So we can, we can liberalize the rules for ADUs. There was some effort a few years ago on council to do this. There were a lot of compromises made that still made it extremely hard to have an accessory dwelling unit. So another, so allow someone else to have an apartment in your house, or in a small house in your, in your backyard that you built out, or someone who could live on the top floor of a garage. Again, low-hanging fruit definitely makes sense from a climate emergency perspective. There's no reason we shouldn't be doing that. And then...
Have you ever brought your, your kids back here and said, you know, hey, our young adults, there's some extra space back here. You thought about, you know, like sketch out a possible ADU in the, in the back?
So what we sketched out for the backyard behind me was a foam pit that never fully got built, but what they wanted to do was ride their bikes and skateboards off this ledge and jump into it. So they started the trenching work that got about, you know, an afternoon in of trenching.
Yeah, like this is hard.
Abandoned ship. So if we couldn't get the, you know, the foam pit to work, yeah, I'm skeptical that the boys are going to build an ADU back here, but maybe someday.
Priorities change as you grow older, though.
They've gotten a little older now, so, yeah.
Well, so one of the, the, the big complaint about higher occupancy and more efficient use of housing is, currently available housing, is the cars. What do we do about the cars?
Right.
That, that's one, I guess. There's also some arguments about investors coming in and swooping in and turning, dormifying Boulder, which I don't know if we want to go into that or not. It's, it's such a vacuous argument in my, my perspective, but we can...
Let's start with that one, and then let's talk about the cars.
Yeah.
The cars, I mean, I think there is something legitimate that there may well be more cars. On the investor theory, you know, this is something that I think has been made up by people who are living now in fancy houses that have appreciated a lot. And I don't think there's evidence to support that. And I was actually having lunch with someone today who was telling me, you know, bought his house decades ago, it's on the hill. He said it just assessed at $3 million. You know, he has a big, beautiful house on the hill. And the thought that an investor would say, the way I'm going to make money on a $3 million house is buy that and have eight college students live in it, is crazy. I mean, that's not, that's not a smart real estate move. The smart real estate move is to buy houses that need some work, fix them up, and flip them and sell them as single-family houses. There is not evidence that people are buying these now extremely fancy single-family houses on the hill and flipping them for, to pack them with college students who, you know, if anything, would lower the property values.
I think that's a very compelling argument. I think a nice corollary to that is the implied assumption that somehow these occupancy restrictions have somehow stagnated housing prices or suppressed them in the, the years that they've been in place, which to me is also like patently absurd.
Right, I mean, we've tried something, and we have a result. And the question is, do we like the result we have?
Yeah.
And the result pretty clearly doesn't work based on the housing crisis the city currently has. But the, the second issue, the parking issue. You know, there, there are trade-offs that we have to make. So if we take the climate emergency seriously, one thing that means is that in, in urban areas like Boulder, we need to have more people living there. And that, that will mean there are more cars. And the question is, are we willing to trade off not always having an empty parking spot in front of our house in exchange for allowing a 20-something or a 30-something that's just getting their life going and getting their, you know, feet wet, or doing something creative in town, or, or working as a teacher? Do we want to have a place for them to live? And if we do, it may mean that we have to walk a little further, and really not that much further, when we're talking about half a block further to park. So that's a trade-off. It's a trade-off I'm willing to make. It's a trade-off. The other thing we get, the benefit that we get, isn't, it's just not, it's not entirely altruistic. It is altruistic. But the other benefit is that we have a richer community, but not in the dollar sense. We have a community with different kinds of people, with people who are musicians and artists, and people who, you know, enliven our spaces. So yes, I think if we're being honest about it, it will lead to more cars, and it may mean that we can't always park directly in front of our homes. But the question is, what does it add to a neighborhood to have more people? And in my view, it's, it's worth it.
Well, I, I appreciate that response. And I will say, when I first logged on to the Bedrooms Are For People website, that was my first reaction was, yeah, but what about, what about the cars? I guess I just would just encourage you as, if, when you get elected to city council, to, to say, you know, if, if parking is a problem, let's, let's do some policy tweaks and imagination around how we can, you know, improve parking situations. Or, I mean, I, I feel like if we are serious about climate change, a lot more of us need to get out of our cars and like sell them and trade them in for e-bikes, or walk, you know, live in 15-minute neighborhoods. And so, I mean, like the trend I would love to see is, as, as we increase the number of people, we actually reduce the number of cars. And I think there's ways of making it more expensive, or maybe less convenient, or lots of possibilities there, so.
Well, I mean, one natural effect of having more people is it actually makes alternatives more viable. So by that, I mean, you know, they've done studies about how many people have to live in a neighborhood for the neighborhood to support a thriving coffee shop, or a little grocery store, or somewhere where you can and would want to walk to. You need, you need some amount of critical mass to make that work. And the same is true with public transit. So for people to get out of their cars and take the bus, we need public transit that's frequent and cheap. And the only way to do that is to have enough people to make that workable. So I mean, in some ways, these, these things really do go together, for sure, for sure.
Cool, well, so, let's see. You talked about using better, making better use of the housing that we have now.
Yeah, right.
What else you have?
No, look, and then the other side of that is building new places for people to live. So I mean, the National Sierra Club has said the single most important thing we can do for the environment is careful infill development. So in other words, looking at empty lots in urban areas and, and building multifamily housing there. So multi-housing, multi-family housing can mean things like duplexes and triplexes and fourplexes. We have plenty of space in Boulder where we can build more, but the problem is our current planning processes take years to a decade to build anything. So you look at a place like Alpine Balsam. And then the city bought the hospital in 2015, and we are nowhere near allowing anyone to live there. And if we, if we get this done to the end of this decade and families move in, that'll be impressive on the city scale.
Despite all the cool schematas I've seen, where you walk through the neighborhood, it looks awesome, I'm ready to, you know, sign me up, you know?
See, okay, I agree. It looks great. And the thing is, if we had built in 2015, a baby could have been born and grown up before actually any shovel will ever... Right, before any shovel hit the dirt. And to me, that's tragic. I mean, I think, when, when I think of, when I talk about Boulder being for all of us, I'm talking about not just thinking about the people who are here. I'm talking about the people we've shut out. And today, we are shutting people out of Alpine Balsam by not having built that out two, three, four years ago. Today, we're shutting people out of the old People's Clinic building at the corner of Iris and Broadway, where there was a proposal to build there, and it got shut down. And that's families that could have lived there and raised kids there, and had great lives and thrived in Boulder. And so we need to look at the opportunity cost of spending a decade to approve a development project. We can do a lot better, and it would make a big difference.
Well, I appreciate the way you frame that, because a lot of people go straight to what I think is a red herring, which is like the height limits. Oh, well, you know, we're, we're always arguing about the height limits. And it's like, no, that's, you know, you don't go from like 85% single-family housing straight to like 55-foot buildings everywhere, you know?
Right.
I mean, sure, you could perhaps have some really dense housing right downtown that would be affected by a 55-foot height limit. But to me, that's not really the solution. Like, the solution is like about infill all over the city.
I, I agree. I mean, no one is proposing that. You know, no one's proposing getting rid of the height limits, and there's no need to. We're just not at a point where that's a conversation. You know, I heard someone say the other day, oh, if you want to allow more people to live in Boulder, we'd have to build out our open space. I mean, that's ridiculous. We don't, you know, I wouldn't support that. And there's no need, there are plenty of spaces. There, when, as you say, when 85% of the city is zoned for single-family houses, you know, there's room to do more on the lots that we have.
Do you have any thoughts about asphalt and how much there is in the city?
I do. You know, it's interesting. I've been seeing pictures of cities in, in Europe, including Paris, where there's a, there's an effort to reclaim public space. So my office is at Ninth and Walnut. And, you know, I saw Pearl Street get closed between Ninth and Eleventh. And I saw how happy people are in the evenings strolling up and down that street. I mean, we have created, out of necessity from COVID, we've just created a thriving public space. You know, I heard this week, city council and city staff were talking about when that should end. And I don't see why it should end. I think what we could do is rip up some of the asphalt, extend the mall that way, and, you know, just recognize, we stumbled into something great in that space. There's space on the hill that's similar. There's a block that's closed off there with restaurants, where, again, people enjoy having walkable space. So the mall was built decades ago, and thank you to the people who did that. This generation now has an opportunity to double or triple that size for closed streets, you know, very quickly based on our COVID experience.
Yeah, I can imagine an entire pedestrian district downtown where, where cars are sort of relegated to the fringes.
Well, yeah, I mean, just on that, and I mean, interrupt, but it's, downtown's small.
Yeah.
You know, so it's, we're not talking about people having to walk terribly far. I can imagine that too. And it would be just a joy. The same way people are happy when they go to the Pearl Street Mall, they could be happy walking on the blocks around there. And the truth is, no one likes driving there anyway. It's just a pain. It's just difficult.
Way, way easier to bike downtown.
Exactly, but you know what there's not downtown? Is a great street to bike east-west. You know, because I bike downtown a lot, and it's a little scary, whether you're on Spruce or Pine, Walnut's one way, the other way. That's, it's not terrible, but it's, let's call it somewhat frightening. So, you know, there's the Boulder Creek Path that's all the way on the far side of Canyon. But no, we, we actually could use some bikeways downtown, too.
Definitely, definitely. Cool, well, do you have any, do you have any more thoughts about housing?
I mean, I think those are the, the big picture goals.
Yeah, great. So that, that's kind of a nice segue into, maybe let's just sort of close the loop on transportation a bit more.
Yeah, for sure.
Yeah, so give us a positive vision for what you would have, what you have, what you'd like Boulder to do about transportation.
Yeah, and I'm glad we started with housing, because like I said, with more people living a little closer together, in terms of skyscrapers, but just moderate improvements there, it makes public transit much more viable for our city. And I think we need a bus network that's fast and inexpensive. So, you know, I lived in Washington DC, it has a great public transit network. I lived in Philadelphia, where I grew up, you know, great public transit network. And it's great, because it doesn't take much more time to take the bus or there to take the subway than it does to drive and park. For Boulder, we need that, and we're nowhere near that. So actually, frankly, when I moved here, I hadn't, my wife and I had owned one car for years, and when I moved here, it just seemed unworkable to just have one car. I think now, you know, we're rethinking how we're living. My wife's just got an e-bike. I was saying, you know, I'm looking at getting an e-bike.
Very cool.
Maybe it's possible, but we need to make it easy for people. And that means transit. It also means our bike infrastructure needs to get a lot better. So, you know, Boulder's bike paths are really wonderful. I mean, they're fun to bike on, they're efficient. But we also need bike lanes on streets. And the thing right now is, it's frightening for a lot of people to bike on streets. And that's because we don't have protected bike lanes. So there seem like some pretty clear candidates, like 19th Street and 30th Street, and Arapahoe, and Pearl heading east, where protected bike lanes would make a huge difference.
My personal favorite would be Table Mesa.
Right, okay.
I'm always deciding whether to cut straight through on Table Mesa and save a few minutes, or go down to the Bear Creek Bike Path.
No, and that's right. And, you know, you're someone who's confident on a bike, right? You know, when we talk about someone who's more of an occasional rider, or who has children with them, you know, we want those people to feel safe. So you need protected bike lanes to make that work. So this summer, we've seen just a heartbreaking number of bike fatalities in the Boulder area. And a lot of that's not in the city, it's around the city. But, you know, each one of those is like a dagger.
Yeah.
And we can and should do better.
Well, and it adds to the, the risk calculation of, am I going to, am I going to increase the amount of biking I do to go places? Or am I afraid of all the big trucks and...
Right.
And drivers on the road?
No, so my wife works in Longmont for Boulder County Public Health. She has an e-bike. She loves to e-bike to work, but right now, there's not a great way to get there. And you can bike on the diagonal, but it's not fun, biking on what's essentially a freeway.
I've done it quite a number of times.
And, you know, there is this plan that's not funded to build a bike path, mostly, I think, in the middle of the diagonal. And that would make a huge difference, and that's something the city should be advocating for. I'll tell you, the traffic into town from Longmont has gotten really terrible, both on the diagonal and then coming down North Broadway.
Is that, is that true, like right now, this month? And I work from home, so I don't really pay attention to the, the traffic coming out and out.
Yeah, the traffic's back. I mean, there was a time during COVID when it wasn't, but yeah, no, the traffic is rough. You know, I hear my wife talks... You know, I hear, my wife talks about it cause she's driving out of town, so she's essentially reverse commuting.
Yeah.
But, yeah, and making that bike wa, making that a viable bikeway for people that's direct, it's not that far. And particularly with e-bikes, it's an easy ride.
That's right. Oh, what I wanted to say is that, you know, I think, and this kind of ties in together, like bedrooms are for people and the housing, things that you mentioned, and transportation. And that is, I think there's actually a market for young people to move into town without a car. Like, I, I know personally, a bunch of people that don't have a car and live in town.
Right.
And can do everything they need to with, with their bike or just walking. And I think, you know, people who are serious about climate change are really looking for that, like, and so, and I'm looking, I'm actually looking for that. I, I, we own one, my family, we own one car, and I bike everywhere. And, well, my, my wife and kids, they, they also bike everywhere, but we do, we do have a car and use it frequently. But, you know, like, like thinking about what kind of housing we want in the future or, or just, you know, the demographic I just mentioned, I think we ought to really anticipate the people who are serious about climate change
Right.
and, and want to have housing options that don't require them to have a car.
Well, I think, I think you raise a, a great issue. So, you know, a few thoughts about it. One is the climate benefits, and the other is the economic benefits of not having a car. So it's just a lot less expensive. So if you wanna make Boulder work for you and you're not super wealthy, not having a car is, is a good strategy. You know, when we were talking about housing, one thing we didn't talk about are restrictions, are rules like, like parking minimums. And I think a lot of people don't understand how this works. So if you're gonna build multifamily housing in Boulder, Boulder requires you to have a certain number of parking spaces per bedroom.
Yeah.
Boulder, which says that we wanna be a leader on climate. You know, we insist, insist that you build parking spots for cars if you wanna, if you wanna build bedrooms for people. And that's crazy, because there are people who wanna live in communities with no cars or fewer cars. And what are you, so there was a development that actually just got approved on Arapahoe, you know, on East Arapahoe, and the developer said, you know, we're designing this for people who don't wanna have a car lifestyle.
They wanna jump on the jump, and they wanna bike on the bike way.
Exactly.
Yeah.
And the city insisted they build a, a parking structure, which they're doing, but the architects were clever enough to design it so that if the city ever changes its rules, they can deconstruct that parking deck
Okay.
and put additional housing there. So I thought that was forward thinking, but yeah.
Well, a couple of thoughts that come to mind when you say that is, one issue is just the, the extreme cost of a per parking spot. Especially, you know, if we're gonna build infill, that means we're not gonna have giant driveways in front of the, the multifamily, you know, infill projects that we do. We, you know, a lot of those, if you're gonna have parking requirements, parking minimums, they're gonna have to go underground. And the cost of underground parking is really astronomical. I've, I've heard like quotes of like fifty thousand per spot, which, like, if you just think about the cost of, you know, if you wanna have modestly priced condos on the market.
Right.
Adding fifty thousand dollars to a modestly priced condo is like, that's, that's a huge expense that someone has to pay. And it's, you know, it
Yeah. And, you know, it's interesting, I mean, I guess, having grown up on the East Coast in a city that was built, you know, a lot of it was built in the late eighteen hundreds and early nineteen hundreds, and then living in Washington, that really sort of grew up in the twenties and thirties and forties. Living in neighborhoods that were designed for people to walk, it is great. I mean, then where people have front porches and the design of the house is to have you near the sidewalk so you can see and interact with your neighbors, that's a really nice way to live. And it is a little less convenient for your car, but again, there's a trade-off there. You can build great neighborhoods without cars. And, you know, I'm not saying every new development shouldn't be designed to allow cars. If people wanna live somewhere where they wanna be able to drive their car and park in a parking deck right by where they live, there's gonna be a market for that, and they should. But the question to me is, should this city of Boulder require every new development to have a fifty thousand dollar or whatever cost parking space associated with it?
Yeah.
And I don't see why we don't allow people to pay less and live in a neighborhood where they don't have to have a car.
I, I heard about the, the property at the, at the flower shop there by the Peloton of Freihoff's?
Mm-hmm.
Was the name of the shop?
Yeah.
And there's a senior living development going in there that's, that's car, that's parking restricted, and it's gonna have a car share. And I'm just really excited that's, that sort of, those sort of ideas are, are being promoted. But I'd love to see a lot more of those around the city where, you know, a, a spot that I always think about, cause I live in South Boulder, is Baseline and Broadway, where you could build a bunch of housing and just, and just have a pilot where you said, this is gonna be carlight living housing, there's gonna be car shares, and it's gonna be for the kind of demographic, well, it doesn't, we don't have to target any demographic, but
No.
but, but, you know, the, the younger person perhaps, sorry, that's, that's sort of beside the point. There are people, there are people who want to live in a carlight lifestyle.
Right.
And so we ought to have options for those folks.
Right. And, you know, it may be true, it's easier for people to do that who aren't shuttling kids around to after-school sports and things that I did for years and years. A lot of those people can also shuttle their kids, you know, on e-bikes, and there are other ways to do it. But the fact of the matter is, actually, as younger generations are having fewer and fewer kids, designing thriving places and communities that really aren't centered around a suburban lifestyle with, you know, everyone driving their own cars
Yeah.
and parents feeling the need to drive all the time makes sense.
Well, I, I'll just say this, and that is, I, I have a friend who lives near me who puts his kids in a minivan, drives to the local school, then drives downtown, parks in a parking structure. And I, I hop on my bike with kids on the back and, and do the same thing. And like, I just would never trade, trade my commute for his commute, you know?
Right.
And, and really, like, we oughta, we oughta really just sort of lean into the, the need for, it's not, it's not just better for the climate, it's like, it's pro-social and it's, it's, it's better for your, your mental health and it's, it's easy on the finances. Like, parking downtown with a bicycle is not expensive.
No, it's funny, I mean, I, yeah, I, I think it's hard for people to break habits, but I think when they do, people are often happy. So, you know, Boulder's an interesting town, we have all these athletes who are getting up in the morning and doing something hard. Get up at five in the morning and go for a run, or, you know, go work out. And people are good about that in town. And even though there's a little pain involved in that, I think everyone would say, yeah, that makes my life more fulfilled. And I find when I'm biking to work a lot, I have that feeling. I just enjoy that, even my bike ride down to my office from here is, you know, ten, fifteen minutes. But just having that ten or fifteen minutes whizzing through town on my bike.
You notice things.
Yeah, it makes my day more bright. And if I'm in a rut and not, and I'm driving, you know, I don't get that. So I hear what you're saying, that sort of giving people a bit of a push to step out of their normal routine and try these things, I think actually, you know, would make their lives better, as well as, you know, it's necessary for the climate emergency.
Yeah.
You know, as well as it makes things more affordable.
I, I have one more sort of, this is kind of a digression, but it's, it connects. And that is, you were talking about how lovely it is to live in a city that's, you know, walkable, in a neighborhood that's walkable. And one of the connections that makes for me is, we live in a college town where CU Boulder, the campus, the main campus, is just the most pedestrian-friendly district in town that you can, that you can imagine. And, you know, we, we, we tell kids, undergraduates, we give them this, this, this special place to, to spend four years walking around everywhere, biking and skating, skateboarding. And then, then we tell you, oh, sorry, the rest of the city's not like this. And in fact, because it's not, you can't afford to live here, go somewhere else.
Right.
And, but I think a lot of people that have gone to, you know, like a, a four-year liberal arts college, maybe one of the reasons they loved it, if they did, is because it was like the one time in their life where they actually just like lived in a walkable atmosphere, where you could just run into people and like have all the serendipity that's involved with being in compact neighborhood.
Well, and lived with friends.
Yeah.
That's the thing, dorm living is fun. And then when kids are a little older and they live with two, three, four, five of their friends.
Yeah.
That's a great way to live. And when I was in my twenties, I was in Washington DC and lived in group houses.
Yeah.
And it was legal there, we had no occupancy limits, it didn't seem to wreck the town. And it was, I wouldn't have traded it for the world. I mean, it was the sort of centerpiece of my social life at the time. And, yeah, I don't know why we're so afraid to give that opportunity to people here.
Yeah. One more, one more thought, I'm sorry, I should be asking the questions. But, you know, when I think about an ADU going in, or a, a, a single-family home turning into a duplex and, or Alpine Balsam, and when you create those new housing opportunities, that, you know, it, it, the, the effect on the climate is not just about getting people closer to, to town, but it's also like, that buyer of that house, what, what do they buy if they don't have the new, have the, you know, new construction to buy? Well, they, sometimes they drive out to the, the suburbs
Yeah.
on the fringes where we're still expanding rapidly, like there's, like there's no end to the space we can occupy. And I just, I feel like, you know, one thing that Boulder's done really well is constrained sprawl
Right.
in, in a limited way, at least, at least kind of in a very local way is what I mean to say.
Yeah.
We've exacerbated it in places like Erie and Louisville and, and surrounding other suburbs. But I think, I think we all have this value that like, we shouldn't be sprawling out anymore.
Right.
And that relates to how we like do housing here in Boulder.
Right. And when we think about who we are as Boulder and we ignore the large numbers of people commuting in from Weld County and Lyraimer County, we're ignoring the effect that we're having on our little corner of the world here. So, I mean, the sixty thousand in commuters are spending, you know, a third or a half of their day in Boulder, they are part of our community. And the only question is whether we all wanna require them to, you know, spend an hour and a half a day driving back and forth to Weld County or Greeley or, or Erie or other places. And, you know, I don't, I wanna find more ways for more people to live here. And I think we can do so in a way that, you know, maybe it'll somewhat change the character of our neighborhoods, but I think it'll be a change for the better.
Well, if we can move towards less car-dominated neighborhoods that are more walkable and bike-friendly, then I think the, the trade-off of having more people, it's actually really nice.
Agreed. You know, when I bought my house, one of the first things we did was, there was no pathway from the sidewalk to my front door. It's just unbelievable, but the house was built in the late eighties, and that's how they did.
The expectations you drive in
Yeah, exactly.
and shut the door behind you and
And several other neighbors have done it too. And, you know, this is a neighborhood where I am, where the neighbors know each other and like each other and talk to each other, but it required intentionality. It required us, it required us to do little things, like changing our walkways, and then to do things like work at it, focus on it. One of our neighbors has a movie night once a week, and
Nice.
we make it a point to swing by, so we know each other, and it, it, it makes our community that much more vibrant.
Cool. Well, I think that's a nice way to close off the housing section. I know we, we also wanted to talk about various issues around equity and diversity and policing and related issues, so, yeah.
Yeah, so, I mean, you know, my professional work as a lawyer, one of the things I have focused on is civil rights litigation, and that includes cases where, it includes cases involving police misconduct. And Boulder is not immune from that. I mean, we have this Zayed Atkinson case, it was just an easy example, where this was a, a college student at Naropa who's black, who was cleaning up trash, he was trash in front of his apartment building. It was his job was to do a little maintenance work at his apartment building, and he was sitting on a wall with one of those trash pickers. And a police officer just thought he didn't belong and started questioning him and demanding that he provide ID, and he got upset about it. You know, he said, why am I being singled out? And it was obvious why, because he was African-American. And, you know, next thing you knew, there were, I think, about half a dozen cops there. It escalates, and they're pointing their guns at him, and you see the pain that Mr. Atkinson went through. That's not a police force that's respecting people's civil rights. You know, that's not a police force that looks different from the police force in the cities that we think of as, as much more conservative cities on the front range. So I think the Boulder Police Department has a lot of reforming to do. One thing that's interesting that I saw today about our police department is, they're having a hard time filling jobs. And in fact, they're losing officers. And one of the reasons I think that's happening is, we're asking our police to do the wrong things. So, you know, when someone goes to the police academy, they wanna make a difference for their community, and they wanna do it by fighting crime. And when we're asking police to fight property crime, bike thefts, car break-ins, that's what they're excited to do, and that's what we want them to do. And when we're asking them to prevent and solve violent crime, crimes against people, that's what they wanna do, they wanna make us safer. But what we're doing here in Boulder is, we're also asking the police to solve social services problems. You know, we're asking them to spend a huge amount of time citing people for minor violations if they're unhoused. And that is not what excites a police officer to get up in the morning and do their job. And frankly, it's not what they're good at. Social workers are good at doing social work, police officers are good at dealing with property crime and crimes against people. And I think if we took some stuff off the police's plate and used social workers for social problems, we'd have more success in terms of managing the social problems, and we'd have a, a happier police force and a, a more balanced police force that's focused on what they need to be doing.
That's, that's great. I was listening to a radio program by KGNU called Black Talk which had an episode on, on this issue with, you know, mental health and the, the difficulty of, you know, some of these scenarios where the police kind of come in as, as military ops, and, and it can only escalate if there's not complete compliance, which is difficult when someone's having a psychotic episode, you know? And so, I think
Right, I mean, I was talking to a mom whose son is mentally ill, and, you know, we were talking about what happens when the police are stopping people excessively, because she says, you know, her son will run. I mean, as much as she tries to explain to him not to, that's what he's gonna do. And people get shot running from the police, they get tased running from the police, they get tackled. And, you know, there's a different way to interact with mentally ill people that social workers are trained to do. And, you know, the thing about Boulder is, we talk about Boulder as such a progressive, liberal place, but we don't have to invent these solutions on our own, because actually other cities are leap years ahead of us, doing this sort of thing. And it's time for us just to start looking at best practices. I mean, so, we have a new city manager in Boulder who actually has worked in other places that are using more progressive policing strategies and, you know, understanding that we can limit police enroll to crime fighting and have social workers do social work. And it, one thing I think city council can do is listen to the really good staff that have been hired in the last few years, cause I, I think we can make these changes, I mean, I think we can get there. But we need a city council that's gonna empower these changes and, you know, maybe we're a bit beyond your question, but that's why I'm running. You know, this is a moment when we can make that difference, and I'm excited to go try to do it.
Yeah, I think, I think it's kind of ironic, or, not ironic, it's kind of gives me hope that we actually have a, a city staff that seems to be kind of out in front of city council. Like, city council seems to be like, hey, hold, hold your horses and getting in the way.
Right.
And so I'm excited about the possibility of electing a, a slate of progressive candidates and, and sort of just be, and, and then you guys could turn around and be like, go, go do your work, do it well.
Right, you know, on, on racial equity, the staff put together a really thoughtful analysis of the problems in Boulder. And one of the things they identified was that our, our housing policies have made was that our, our housing policies have made racial inequity more pronounced, that, that we actually have a set of, you know, having 85% of the city zone, single family housing, and frankly, having the green belt around the city has made Boulder the exclusive enclave that it is. And that's not to say we need to go build out the open space. We should not do that. But we should recognize the problem. And when the city staff say, we've studied this and, you know, whether people had good intentions or bad intentions, this is the effect of it. You know, that's something that I want to have a city council that listens to that.
So is that a, is that a report that they, that they gave the city council or is that, is that embodied in the? Like when you, when you described that, I was thinking, oh, that sounds like the Boulder Validative Comprehensive Plan.
This is in the.
That's something else.
No, that, that is something else. This is in the city, the staff did a draft racial equity plan. And, you know, my understanding was the council was concerned about some of the language that is very specific about our housing policies that have led to racial exclusion in Boulder. And, you know, one of the things the staff pointed out, which I've found in my own studies about the history of Boulder is our exclusionary living practices here are intentional. We didn't just end up this way accidentally. So in the tens and twenties and thirties, when the Klan had a huge presence here, there was a decision made to exclude undesirables, as they were called at the time. And that was done by keeping industry out of Boulder, which has been relatively successful at eliminating industry from town. And having large, single family lots. And that's persisted.
It's like this living legacy that, that we, that, that is just all around us. And it's had a, you know, intended consequences. I think that's the, the phrase I like to use when people say, oh, these other policies will have unintended consequences.
Right.
Gosh, we, we're looking at a situation where there's lots of intended consequences that's, that have built up over the decades.
Right. And I think people, you know, some people bristle at that because they say, well, if I like the way my neighborhood is zoned, are you calling me a racist?
Right.
And I mean, I'm not, but I do think we need to recognize how we got where we are. And I do think we need to say, if we want something different, we're going to have to make some changes. There are some trade offs here. And we're living in a community that is, you know, racially exclusive and has excluded black people and Latino, Latina people and native people. And if we want to change that, you know, we're going to have to change some things that maybe are a little uncomfortable for us. And that's a decision we're making today.
Yeah. I, I, I don't want to give a pass to people who want to say they're not racist. And in the, in the scenario you just described, in the following way, like, like if you, if you don't feel like you have racism, racism in your heart, good for you. I, I, I hope that, I want to live in a community where people feel like they're open to lots of different kinds of people being in their orbit of friends and, and workplace and whatnot. But I, I think, you know, it's kind of the white fragility response to be tone deaf to the racial, the racist structures that, that we live in. And I, I just, it's not, it's not, to me, it's not a complete accident that it's 85% single family home zone and 88% white. I mean, I know that they're, they're correlated. It's not a complete, you know, if you draw the Venn diagram or whatever, but like I, we live in, the single family home zone comes from a racist design, you know, in the teens, twenties of the last century. And we never, we never did anything about it. It's all still here, just kind of like it was. And we have said, oh, well, you know, anyone can, can move into this, this lovely configuration now. But, you know, we, I don't, I don't know. It's like the, the opportunities that we eliminated from people through things like the GI Bill and
Right.
and whatnot. It's just, like, I just, I just want to always push back a bit or maybe a lot to people who say, well, I'm not racist, even though I like single family zoning.
Right.
And part of me just wants to say, well, the good news for you is that North America is covered with single family zoning. And, and there's so many options for you. But, you know, if you're a person of color without, you know, a high paying six figure salary and maybe you want to live in a car light neighborhood, where, where do you go? I mean, like, and if you can't go to Boulder, it's like, I don't know. It's like, there's, so I'm excited.
No, I see your point. I mean, look, you know, one way to look at racism is there's a conversation that, you know, white people want to have that racism's what's in my heart.
Yeah.
But the other way to look at racism is, is what you do, what the consequences are of your actions. And then we don't really need to talk about what's in your heart. We need to talk about what effects you're causing in the world. And that's where I think understanding our history makes a difference. You know, so after George Floyd was killed in 2020, one of the things I did was I worked with my law firm to set up a series of panel discussions on the history of racial exclusion in Boulder. And, you know, I just learned a tremendous amount.
Have those recorded?
We, we've done the first one. It is recorded. The second one is going to be in late October, early November.
Well, I'd love to watch it myself and link to it from, from the show notes.
No, that would be great. So one of the things I learned is the black community in Boulder, such as it is, IBM was responsible for bringing a lot of black families to Boulder. And you don't think of IBM as this leader in progressive anything.
Yeah.
But it made sense when she explained it to me, you know, the, the person I was talking to was with the NAACP of Boulder County. And she was saying, yeah, I mean, Boulder's a tough place and you need big employers to build a diverse community. And we have some big employers now in town. And one question I have is instead of just hating on Google and Apple and the other big tech companies, like maybe we could lean on them to make our community better in the ways that IBM did, you know, for a prior generation. Maybe, maybe it'll succeed. Maybe it'll fail. I think it's certainly worth trying.
I'm not sure I have anything coherent to say about, about Google and Apple and my brain sort of goes in five directions of that possibility, but.
But look, I mean, that's the thing, right? We're talking about IBM. IBM was a leader in integrating Boulder. I mean, that's just a shocking fact.
That is interesting. Yeah. I didn't, I didn't know that. So I'm excited to, to learn more. So, so tell me what, what, what it's called and
So.
How can I participate?
Yeah. So it's a good question. So my law firm session's in Black and Cook. If you Google us and history of racial exclusion. We have online and it's on YouTube, our first panel. We did it in conjunction with CU's Law School.
Okay.
So I think it may be hosted on the law school's website. And then we started with the history of exclusion of African Americans from Boulder. Next session is going to be, we're going to look at what happened with the native community.
And is this something that's happening on campus or it's a Zoom panel?
So the first one was sort of in the heart of COVID shutdowns. So we did it all Zoom. Second one is going to be both in person at the law school and on Zoom. One of the things we found doing on Zoom was way more people attended than we ever would have guessed. And one of the things that I really loved about it was, you know, I was hoping we would get 50 or a hundred people. And we had 700 people sign up for it, you know? We had five or six who, who tuned in. And it was, yeah, just an overwhelming interest and response. It really, it made me feel hardened that there's a community here that really cares about these issues. And then we'll do a session on Latino, Latina exclusion. And then we're going to do a fourth session talking about the future, the road ahead. So, you know, we're doing these slowly. So we did the first one in February, second one later this fall, and then the third one will be over the winter and fourth one probably be next summer.
Great. I'll, I'll, so we'll, we'll, I'll have you give me the details after this. But, um, so I wanted to ask you about the campaign. So how, how's the campaign going? Congratulations on getting your matching funds and maxing out your contributions.
Yeah.
So just tell us, tell us a bit about that.
You know, it's been a whirlwind. I mean, I'm not someone who 10 years ago decided I wanted to be on Boulder City Council. You know, I sort of looked and assessed where the city was and where the opportunities were to have a progressive majority, make some changes in town and decided to jump in kind of late. So, you know, June, May, June, it's been a whirlwind. I mean, I've been learning a tremendous amount. I've been meeting with a ton of people and talking to people. It's been also just really gratifying to, you can lose sight of the fact that there are a lot of people in Boulder who really care about progressive values and really want to make a difference. And it's been just really fun to build out a campaign team. You know, with our fundraising, basically the system here is you raise $11,000. You can't get more than a hundred dollars per person. And then the city matches it. So then you have a, a spending cap that's just under $22,000. And, you know, raising money wasn't something I thought I'd want to do, but getting on the phone.
Turned out to be fun, I guess.
Yeah, right. I mean, look, you know, I called so many people I hadn't talked to in so long. And it was just really nice to reconnect with people.
Did you have 11,000 divided by 111, 110 donors? Did you have a bunch of donors?
We had, we had more than 110. We had maybe 150.
Okay.
I don't have the exact count. So a lot of the donations were in a hundred dollar increments and then some were 25 or 50 dollars.
I guess, I guess it's such a, it's such a small amount of money that you, you don't really, you can't do the Bernie Sanders thing where you say, I had millions of five dollar donors or whatever.
Right. I mean, for federal elections, I don't know what the exact limit is, but it's like 2,500 bucks or something. I mean, it's different when you're raising it in, in hundred dollar increments. That's like, you know, a dinner for two at a Boulder restaurant.
Yeah, exactly. Well, and I didn't know that the city matched the funds. So you have $22,000 to, to, to spend it on.
Yeah.
What, what do you spend it on? I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, it's a good question.
I don't actually know.
Because I was asking people, I mean, is that enough? This wasn't something I'd planned on doing forever. So I didn't really have a good sense of that. So yard signs, apparently that's still important to go print a ton of.
Oh, do you have one here?
Paper? I do. Yeah. I'm happy to give you one.
Is that, I guess that's an implicit endorsement. I'll be putting his yard sign in my, in my front yard.
Yeah. We got stickers which are super fun, not a huge expense. So you need to print literature. So there'll be literature put on 35,000 people's, you know, doorsteps or in their door, multifamily. And then advertising takes money, you know, through the daily camera. So it's, it's not a lot, the 22,000.
Yeah, it goes quick, I'm sure.
Yeah.
Do you have paid staff?
No, you couldn't possibly have paid staff. Yeah. So I have a, you know, a group of volunteers. I have some people younger than me who know how to make social media work.
Who's your campaign manager?
My wife is doing my campaign manager role. So her name's Mary Foltensky. She, um, she's been just hugely supportive, which has been really fun.
That makes a lot of sense that she would be supportive if she's, you know,
Yeah.
helping you with the campaign. That's, that's cool.
And then my treasurer is a neighbor who was in, did engineering work is, you know, incredibly meticulous. So all the finances are properly being accounted. And then I have a campaign strategist named Liz Marasco, who's done a lot of stuff with federal elections and statewide elections. And then a guy named Nick Grossman, who's doing social media.
Yeah.
Yeah. So that's the team.
Great. Oh, that's a great team. I, I think your, your odds are very good. I guess you won't be doing any professional polling to find out.
Yeah, right.
I guess you just find out on, on the, on November 2nd or whenever it is.
That's true, but there was a poll early this summer, not about specific candidates, but about issues in Boulder. And it was interesting. So half of the people in Boulder are renters, half aren't. But in terms of who votes, you know, homeowners vote a lot more than renters in Boulder. But this survey was interesting. It surveyed registered voters and it found like with bedrooms are for people, about 75% support.
Wow.
And on progressive issues, it found, it, progressive issues polled well here. I mean, it was really heartening. What it said to me is if we can get the voter pool to look more like the composition of Boulder, we can have a progressive city council. And really the game here is, is getting people out to vote who are infrequent voters. So, you know, vote, it's critical.
Vote. It's critical. Yeah. I know. I've lived here a long time and it, it, it's taken me a long time to care about local politics and to actually pay enough attention to know who to vote for. And I know that a few times I've just sort of looked at the flyers and went online and played around for 10, 15 minutes and, you know, made my decision based on what people were saying. And one of the problems with that is everyone's kind of, sort of, kind of saying the same thing.
Yeah.
But, and so, and so if you're not clued in to what the, the small variations actually mean when, when the rubber hits the road, that can be difficult to, to, to see through. So one, one thing I really appreciate your candidacy along with the rest of the, the folks in the, the press endorsed by the progressive coalition is that there's this very plain spoken addressing of the issues and, and in a way that I feel like wasn't really strong before, like in terms of like leading off with housing and what we needed to do differently. And I feel like in the past, it's always been sort of coded language that says, you know, we're not going to, we're not going to really talk about single family zoning. We're going to sort of like.
Right.
These euphemisms or something.
Right. I think that's right. I think for years, the strategy was, don't make waves. Tell people you're a balanced thinker. You consider all sides, which I mean, those are important things to be, but not really, you know, give much on specific issues. And I actually think this year is shaping up to be a different, you know, on, on what to do with unhoused people sleeping by the creek. I mean, there are two very clear philosophies among the candidates. You know, one is my philosophy and the people on the slate, I think pretty much as a group, I mean, our belief is that for the last year, Boulder has tried one strategy, which is policing, citing people and clearing camps. And the strategies failed. The police chief has said, we have as many people living outside unhoused today as we had a year ago. And there are a group of candidates who want to double down on that strategy. And they say, what we need to do is more sweeps, more money for police. And then the other approach is to say, look, we should not have people sleeping by the creek. I mean, this is where everyone does say the same thing and everyone agrees that having people living by the creek, having people live in bicycle underpasses is not a good idea. It's not something, but what the four of us who the progressive endorse are saying is let's look at evidence based solutions that work. And in this case, there's a nice alignment between what's humane to do and what's actually effective. And the way to get people to not live outside is to give them assisted housing and to open up the shelter to people who have lived in Boulder for less than six months, to have day shelter space, to have safe camping and to have safe parking so that if you're going to tell someone not to live by the creek, there's somewhere for them to go. That's a very different approach. And I, I think this issue more than any is one where we all agree on the goal, which is don't have people living in our public places. But we have very different strategies to get there. And I think, you know, as I say, ours is based on evidence. Ours looks at what worked. It's not just an angry reaction to what's happening. And the other one of, you know, more money for police to do social services. It's failed for the last year and, you know, I don't think it's going to work moving forward, but we do have four or five candidates who want to double down on that strategy.
Well, I hope they don't get elected. What can I say? I mean, that, that we had Jen Livovich on, on the podcast last week and I learned a lot about homelessness from her. It's not something I've spent a lot of time studying. It's really heartening for me to hear you articulate what sound like effective strategies.
Yeah.
But I don't, I don't have, I don't have much else to add to what you said. It sounds, it sounds like, it makes, it seems very sensible to me.
I mean, I've sat down with Jen too, and she's doing something just really moving for our community. You know, she was homeless. I mean, she talked about that with you. And she's looking at really effective ways, coming from a place of kindness, that's actually making a huge difference in people's lives. So I was glad to see you interview her. And, you know, I think the more we talk with people about what she's doing, the better.
Yep. That's great.
I think we've covered a lot.
I think we've covered a lot. It's been, it's been really enjoyable listening to you. I have to say, you don't strike me as someone I would imagine seeing waving a flag from the top of a Cadillac in the, in the, in the front of a parade, you know, like, like you don't strike me as a top hat sort of politician kind of guy. But I'm really excited about the possibility of you being on City Council next year.
I appreciate it.
Well, do you have any parting thoughts?
Yeah. You know, what I've been telling people about my campaign is, you know, if I'm on City Council, I'm going to have three guiding principles for decisions. You know, one is, does it make it easy? I'm going to have three guiding principles for decisions. You know, one is, does it make it easier or harder to live, work and play in Boulder? Number two is, does it promote racial equity and social justice? And number three is, does it address the climate emergency? Those are the things I want to tackle. It's a lot, but, uh, it's doable. And, and that's going to be my philosophy if I'm on council.
Awesome.
This episode of Sharing Boulder was produced by David Adamson and Philip Ogrin. Sound and video editing was done by Philip Ogrin. The intro music was sampled from Ozladum by Gilberto Gil and is available for use under the Creative Commons Sampling Plus license. Please visit us at sharingboulder.us for show notes and previous episodes. If you enjoy this podcast, please support us by sharing this episode with your friends and family. Keep sharing, Boulder.